All right.
Yes, we are on the air.
All right, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial hearing proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter passed then thirty P M. at any regular or special meeting, hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting slash hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are pleased asked to remove, to mute their cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge allegiance, would you lead us, Tom?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Yes, okay, Mr. Rironio is currently absent. Ms. Brennan is excused this evening. Mr. Gene Hockes.
Here.
Mr. Flatley is excused this evening. Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mr. Watts.
Here.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Here.
Chairman Correct.
Here.
Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. So, um, Board Secretary Report. We have the Nice 2024 Application Status, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I just wanted everybody to see that.
Yes, thank you.
Literally in the last three weeks, received five new applications.
Wow, okay, so we're busy.
Uh huh.
Uh, okay, um.
I've redated some of the, uh, the current, the ones from twenty twenty-three that are pending and will be heard within the next two months. So, right now, we're booked pretty much through April, well, we're busy.
We're busy, okay, fair enough. Barring anybody, barring out for some reason.
Correct, right.
Okay, so we have the, uh, we have uncommon thread, and we have flowers, and we have lots of other stuff going on, okay. Very good, okay. Anybody have any questions about this? Okay. You have any questions?
Yeah, I was just looking it over.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any D variances that require, um, a full board?
There's two D variances coming in, one for the Sterling Firehouse. Is that gonna be a D variance? I don't know. Oh, that's your firehouse, right?
Millington.
Millington, oh, so Millington.
I don't think it's becoming the Board of Adjustment, I thought it was the planning.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure, we haven't decided where it's going yet.
Fine. If it's us, I'm not here.
And then the property next door to the Millington.
Yes, and I'm not here for that either.
You, you will recuse, but yes, it will come to this board.
Yeah, that will, that will.
That was, that will be used.
Yeah, that's the flower, uh, people, right?
That's not on, that's not on here, right?
Not yet, those two, I know are on the way.
That's, oh, that's not on here?
Any moment. Actually, there's one sitting out, out in front of my door right now.
Oh, strolling flowers, oh, that's a different flower place, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's a residential property.
Oh, yeah, right, okay, I got you. All righty.
The only thing I could say about this is, is for the Ds, let's get notice out there earlier.
Yeah.
Emails, so that we don't have that embarrassing problem.
Yes, we're, you guys can follow up with everybody to make sure they'll be in the tent.
Aye.
Okay, now, what we're going to do, we have the annual report we just looked at. Oh, no, the annual report is something else, where is, uh?
So, the annual report, I just wanted to touch on it before we go into, um, discussions with the professionals, and, and of course, the professionals can explain the, um, importance of the annual report even further. But, uh, what I will be providing recently, and I will give a copy of the board as well, the draft that I prepare initially of the annual report, this year, we're going to be doing twenty-two and twenty-three because as of, in the year twenty twenty-three, since the master plan was being worked on, and we had a new professional, we decided to wait because we had had a very good comprehensive, um, report from the year before, which I will also send to everybody, so you can see the previous year reports. So, when I put together the draft for my portion, what I'm doing is I'm just outlining every application that the board has received in the years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So, I outline the applications where they stand, majority of them obviously have been approved and memorialized, some may be, some may show as pending, like yet seen as our status, as they're pending, you know, to be heard. But I provide that annual report with those, with all the application lists to our professionals, and then they will go in and they will put in their comments and review the applications to make suggestions for the board to make to the planning board.
Right, based on what the ordinance says.
Correct, so once I have the complete draft of my portion, with, with the last two years of all applications listed, I will send that out to all the board members, the professionals, along with the previous year reports, so you kind of get an idea of, especially for the newest members, uh, what we'll be doing in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Rules for the zoning board of adjustment, um, can I see those?
Sure.
Uh, did everybody get a chance to look at them? I didn't, um, I didn't, I admit I didn't.
I apologize, I didn't print, since those were online, I can print copies for everybody if you wish, I'll leave them in your mailboxes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, were these provided as part of just background materials in conjunction with the educational session?
Yes, yes, yes.
And these, these, these board, um, rules are what this board adopts.
Right.
They go by, so they're online.
All right, good.
They're the same rules for twenty fifteen, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes. They really haven't changed, except there's one area that, um, we do have a little difference because since these rules were, were made, um, in twenty fifteen, the township has seen fit to basically usurp our board staff and consultant evaluations in the sense that you, as the board secretary, are really oversaw by the township committee now. So, other than, I mean, we do have some, some say on the performance of board consultants and staff, but not in the same degree as we used to. So, I don't know whether that is still relevant, or we could take it for any watered down version.
We can, we, if the chair and the board wish, we can take a look at it in conjunction with the Dev and, and the, the rules and for, uh, adoption of this year's version, or, you know, instead of just re adopting our twenty fifteen.
Yeah, I would prefer you looked at Rule three colon two, just to make sure that it complies with the latest version of what the township committee passed. I mean, we're, we still have, uh, say over our engineer and, and, and planner and, and like, I know the attorney, but there was a.
The other, the other one, one look.
Which one are you, Ed, are you looking at the rules or the guide?
Miscellaneous provisions, rules.
Rules, okay.
So, that's three colon two.
Yeah, three colon two.
And then.
And also, uh, one colon one dash four. The Boichel appoint and fix compensation of a secretary, a planning and zoning administrator, a planning consultant and engineer. It, it has changed to the township committee appoints and fix the compensation for the secretary and planning and zoning administrator. We still appoint and fix for the engineer, the attorney and a planner.
Which is, uh, the latter consistent with the municipal land use law.
Yeah, so.
The former discretioner.
Yeah, you might, you might, yeah, you might want to adopt, change the wording in that.
Yeah, one colon one dash four, we got them both.
Can we maybe make a, I don't know if we need a motion and a not like a vote.
Well, let, let, well, why don't they come up with it and then we can.
Oh, okay, that's what I mean, for the, for them, for Steve and Chris to look over the entirety of that.
I don't think we need a motion to have them do that.
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
Yep, well, we will, we take our marching orders, we'll, we'll do it, we'll have redlined versions for the next, for the next meeting.
Once they fix it, then we'll adopt it into.
Right, I didn't know if we just needed to correct them by resolution to do it, or what we needed to do.
All right, applicant's guide to the universe, all right.
That's an old one, too, maybe you need to do.
Yes, I like that one.
It's a goodie, yeah, Cindy Kiefer.
So, we have, um, we have little cartoons in here, it's so cute. The swing one is, that's, that's an oldie but goodie. I haven't seen the skeleton one yet. You have any of those in your, um? Did, did everybody get a chance to look at these over? I think, these have been pretty much vetted, and, and over time, we've honed the, the app, the procedure down so that people don't feel as burdened by the procedure and don't feel as alienated or intimidated by it. So, I think that we, we have done a lot to make the procedure a lot simpler and, and easier and more intuitive. So, you know, I think that's, I, I, I think we've come a long way since I started on the board here.
Is this, is this the package that's, uh, provided to people when they, when they walk in the door?
I mean, yes and no, people don't take it that often. I, honestly, I, I meant to print out, um, I have.
What do you mean they don't take it? You give it to them and they say, no, no, no?
No, I, well, what we do is I usually send them, like, the website where, you know, or the document electronically and just have them look at it, if they ask for a printout, like, but sometimes they look at it, sometimes they don't.
Yeah, you can't force the, the water, the horse to drink the water.
Sure, they may have an attorney who doesn't need to read all this because they know it all.
Yeah, right, well, most attorneys that have come before us know this already. This is more for the, uh.
Pro se applicants.
Oh, pro se applicant against the, you know, the attorneys that may not be as, as, uh, as knowledgeable about it. And, and also, you know, this makes the pro se person who doesn't want to hire their attorney, who has a small project, more comfortable with coming before us because he can read this over and say, okay, I got this, I understand what I have to do. And, and it helps because we had people come in here before we had any of these guides, and they didn't know what to, to tell us. You know, if you don't know what to tell us, we can't help you, so that's the problem.
The extension number for the, um, is this correct? Set up a meeting with Cindy Kiefer?
Maybe want to update.
Oh, yeah, we gotta update that, yeah.
I thought I changed all of it.
Extension one twenty-eight, aren't you like, one eighteen or one seventeen or?
Two eighteen, I think I'm.
Yeah, I think, is it, two eighteen?
You see, your email address is here, like, P Z Cord.
Yeah.
Uh, page two, the one with the, the one with the skeleton.
Yeah, you gotta change the name here.
Oh, I thought I got all the Cindy Kiefer's.
No, you have to find them replaced.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's two places, it's the first page, the second page.
I don't have this in a Word document, so I have to, I have to change, yeah, I, I, but I have the.
Convert it into a Word document, yeah.
I'm very computer handed.
Good, good, good. Sometimes it screws up the pagination, but I, it'll, uh, it'll be all right.
I can fix it.
Yeah, all right, well, aside from the names, I think that's a good document. Land use ordinance code book, um, that's online, right?
That is online, yep, and I, and I just wanted to, that is, you know, if anybody ever has any questions about the land use or, you know, you, oh, I, I always take people, you can come sit with me and we can go through it an after, you know, spend an hour or two if you have any questions. It's pretty easy to navigate because the search bar at the top, even if you put in, like, today I put in M dash H for the Myersville Hamlet zone that I was looking at one of the properties for, and it, the search engine is really good.
Yeah.
But if anybody ever has any questions about it or would like help kind of navigating, my office is always open.
Good, okay. All right, now, uh, New Jersey Planning Officials.
They have, they have a guidebook, is that what you're referring to?
What's that?
Their guidebook?
New Jersey Planning.
The guidebook, yes, that will be provided to the new members, and the new members also get M L U Ls, but I think, I had a couple, I had one of our other, I think, vice chairman asked if, um, I'm gonna try to get other copies of the M L U Ls.
Yeah, we should, yeah, for everybody.
Yes, for everybody, that's, that's the goal for this year.
Okay. Okay, now, besides what's listed up here, we're gonna have our engineer, our planner and our attorney, give us a little primer for some of the newer members. I think the important thing for members to understand, whether you're new or you've been sitting here for a while, is how to listen, how to ask intelligent questions or questions that are probative, and how to get the information that we need to make decisions. So, well, who wants to go first?
The attorney always goes first, and then nobody ever else, you know, no one else gets a chance to speak. But what, but we're gonna do, the way we're gonna do this is, I'm gonna run through roughly pages thirty-three to, uh, about somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, well, let's see, seventy-six ballpark. Uh, on the outline of the PowerPoint that I have there, we're gonna go through it relatively quickly, touch on all the subjects, uh, and, uh, as we go, my colleague Chris Sovieski, as well as my colleagues, our engineer Joe Boich and Liz Laney, our planner, um, will provide the color commentary, jumping in periodically, um, giving the more important practical advice.
The intelligent stuff.
The, the stuff you need to know, I'll go through most of the stuff you probably don't, but, uh, the, a little self-deprecating humor for those who didn't recognize it. They, the, um, and this will be a refresher for, uh, our existing board members and our new board members, uh, hopefully will be helpful for you as you navigate, uh, your way as zoning board members. I will say the additional materials, don't be overwhelmed by the magnitude of the materials, um, there's the annual reports, these are all, the rules are all helpful documents for you to be familiar with. I particularly like the applicant's guide to the zoning board of adjustment because you don't always realize, uh, we see it from the dais as the judges and jurors hearing the applications, um, but there's a process that starts before it gets to you and continues well after you're done with it. And so, it's good to see that process from the eyes and ears and brain of the applicant as opposed to just the judge or jury, uh, which is what, uh, who we are. The, um, also, there's a course, uh, even though you're taking this course, so to speak, with, uh, informally, there's a, a D C A certified course through the N J P O, also the Somerset County Bar Association and others offer it, uh, and it has to be taken within eighteen months of your board membership for you to continue on. I strongly recommend you try to make that three months instead of eighteen months to familiar yourself, familiarize yourselves with the things you need to know as zoning board members, uh, even beyond that, which we're gonna cover quickly tonight.
Unfortunately, you only have to take it one time.
Yes, only, only once. Um, the, and the best news is you won't have to hear it from me anymore, I stopped teaching it about two or three years ago. So, so, um, the, uh, before we get to page thirty-three, though, I just.
You may want to mention that point you gave at Somerset.
Yeah, I said, yeah, Somerset County Bar Association in April. Oh, Liz, Liz is gonna be there.
I'll be there.
There you go, I'll be, uh, yeah, that, they, they offer it as well then in April. So, if you, uh, don't take it through the N J P O, uh, you can take it in, uh, that's gonna be an in-person at Raton Valley Community College on April something, Saturday morning.
They have two versions, a certified version and a non-certified. If you've only been certified, you can take the non-certified version.
Yeah, the, the advanced, uh, but, but this will get you those, uh, those credits, there's a little exam, it's a ten-question, multiple choice, you will know the answers, I trust me, uh, so there's no backing out, you're gonna pass. Uh, the, um, so, uh, what are you doing on the zoning board? You're serving, uh, your fellow residents on a volunteer basis, so thank you, and they should and no doubt will thank you as well. The, um, zoning generally, uh, is a balance because everyone has a right to utilize their property, um, but also, uh, everyone else has a right to, to, uh, the use and enjoyment of their property unfettered, uh, particularly those who are immediately adjacent or whatever the relative, relevant neighborhood is around the subject property. So, you're always trying to find that balance, and that's what the municipal land use law and our zoning ordinances and this citizen tribunal process is all about. Because people come in and they are looking for variances. Variances are exceptions to the rule, uh, and they have certain proofs that they have to prove to you in order to be entitled to those variances. And oftentimes, they're granted, uh, whenever they're granted, uh, there are always conditions of approval to mitigate or minimize the detriments associated with any deviation from a zoning ordinance because if you're asking for an exception, there's this assumption that the rules apply, and if you're going too close or too, or too high, uh, to a, too high in your building or too close to a neighbor, uh, there's a, there are detriments associated with that, so the conditions are to minimize those. So, you are jurors or judges, sitting, hearing the evidence. What's important is you have to know what the criteria are and the questions to ask and to make reasoned determinations as to whether the applicants met those criteria, those, their burden of proof or not, just like in a court of law, we call it a quasi judicial administrative body. Um, the, before we get into, uh, everything you do that is quasi judicial, which is ninety-some odd percent of it, um, we'll talk first about the two percent that is not quasi judicial because every year, at least once, and often only once, uh, we have an obligation under section eight of the municipal land use law as a zoning board of adjustment to adopt an annual report. And Steve's gonna do his quick soapbox, and then we're gonna hand it off to Liz, uh, the, the, if that's okay.
Yeah, well, why don't you go through, I, I have some things about the annual report which maybe, maybe you should just go through your entire.
Oh, the other thing, and then we'll flip back to it? Okay.
Yeah, and we can talk.
Sounds good, but I could, uh, so it's not to make you wait till the end to find out whether the butler did it or not, I'll tell you what the annual report is. Uh, and, and basically, as I said, we're a quasi judicial body. The governing body, uh, uh, the, the township committee is a, uh, is a legislative body, try apartheid government from back in those classes we took in the old days, me, the real, very old days. The planning board happens to be a hybrid. They have a governing body member, uh, as well as a mayor or mayor's designee, uh, on that, but by definition, to be able to do some legislative aspects and some judicial aspects. But the one, uh, non judicial aspect that we do is the annual report. And where it fits in, in my opinion, is this. We hear most of the variance cases, uh, particularly a lot of, of matters involving residential properties. And while the governing body, together with the planning board, makes the law, adopts the zoning ordinances and the land use ordinances, we, as zoning board, see more so the result of those ordinances. And a lot of times, uh, well-meaning ordinances, um, for lack of a better phrase, they sort of catch things in the net that they, that perhaps weren't intended to catch. And you might find that, uh, applicants are showing up a lot, residents are showing up a lot for something that, had the ordinance been modified, they wouldn't necessarily have to spend the time, money and effort to appear before this wise zoning board of adjustment, uh, to, to act in its quasi judicial capacity. So, it's very important that it sort of closes the loop in zoning law at the municipal level, in my view. And that is, the, the, the planning board weighs in with respect to the master plan, the governing body adopts zoning ordinances and all land use ordinances, um, they have to be consistent with the master plan, that's the planning boards, they are the gatekeepers of the master plan, not us. But, uh, at the end of the day, the board, uh, they both hear, the planning board and the governing body, by statute, get from us an annual report, list, not just listing what happened during the, the, the past year, but also, hopefully, where appropriate, making recommendations, saying, we saw a lot of these and we think that this ordinance could be tweaked or what have you. And from those recommendations, sort of closing the loop, then the planning board and the governing body can take that into consideration and decide, you know, pay perhaps, well, you know, it's a, it's a good thing to make some of these amendments to the ordinance. So, it's, it's, closes the loop, and I think it's a great, uh, vehicle that is not always used as much and as well as it should be, and will be doing again shortly for two years worth. So, with that, um, I'll, I'll, I'll save, uh, Liz's contribution to that, and we'll move on to the other ninety-eight percent, which is the stuff we do in a quasi judicial capacity, we hear applications. We have seven regular members and alternate members, whenever alternate, uh, whenever regular members are not here or either absent or conflicted out, alternate members, one, two, you know, in, 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 in sequence, move up and, and sit as regular members. When you're an alternate rep, uh, member, you could hear the application, you can even ask questions, you could even deliberate, uh, participate in deliberations. You can't vote, only the, the top seven, so to speak, can vote. Um, the, uh, what are some of the things you do? You're not gonna see too many of these, but the beauty of section seventy is it has an A, a B, a C and a D, and that's an important section of the municipal land use law, section seventy. As are appeals, just worked out that way, right, with the A, so we got lucky on that one. Um, the, the, um, what is an appeal? Well, we have a zoning officer seated to my far right, uh, and, uh, she makes her deterrent, administrative determinations. For example, uh, someone may say, hey, I want to, uh, uh, do a particular use in my zone, uh, and I'm not good at, uh, uh, examples, so others can jump in, um, but, uh, and, Deb may decide, you know what, that's not, that doesn't fall within the permitted uses in the zone, so I'm not gonna give them, I'm gonna deny their zoning permit and say it's a non-permitted use, whatever it is that they want to do in that particular zone. Well, they may disagree with Deb, shame on them, but they may disagree with Deb, and that's okay, they can appeal her zoning officer's decision. Who do they appeal to? They appeal to us, the zoning board of adjustment. Uh, that's one type of application we can get. A different but similar often application is a seventy B application, that's an interpretation. Unfortunately, it, you know, it didn't start with the same letter, uh, but, but that's okay, uh, not everything's easy in life. And the, uh, an interpretation, for example, might be, um, they interpret the zoning ordinance as permitting a certain use, whereas perhaps our zoning officer interprets the ordinance differently and interprets that the ordinance as not permitting that particular use in that particular zone. One is appealing her decision, one is requesting this board to interpret it differently than the zoning officer. There are similar ways in that example of, uh, obtaining the same potential result. Let me do what I say I want to do as of right, even though the zoning officer says in that circumstance, it's not as of right, you have to get, uh, relief from the zoning board of adjustment to do it. And oftentimes, if someone is making that type of application, either an appeal or an interpretation, the applicant at least would be wise to have an in the alternative. And the in the alternative would be, if you, uh, believe the zoning officer is correct, and I'm wrong, uh, and say it's an, uh, the use I'm asking for in this zone is a, is indeed, in your opinion, as a zoning board, a non-permitted use, as the zoning officer found, give me the variance to be able to permit that use that was deemed non-permitted. That's the alternative relief they would be asking for. That's a D variance, I'm gonna do Cs before Ds, but the first thing I'm gonna do is answer a question.
Okay. The applicant's supposed to have the variance at hand when they're coming before us, before the board with the, with a, uh, an appeal or an interpretation?
I'm not saying they have to, but what I'm saying is oftentimes, uh, if they are appealing a decision of, of the zoning officer and or in, asking for an interpretation from the board, it's to be able to do something without a variance, uh, that they felt under the ordinance they were entitled to do. So, they would be wise, in my opinion, because then if they only came with a, an appeal or an interpretation, and the board said, no, you're wrong, we think the zoning officer's right.
Then they have to come back.
Then they have to go home, and they came, but if they, in the alternative, asked for, well, if you deem the zoning officer correct and me wrong, as the applicant, then in the alternative, please give me the variance that she says I need.
Oh, okay, so they don't have to come up with it on their own, you've kind of indicated to them, it's probably for this variance, and they should have some knowledge of it.
Exactly.
But they tell us what variances they want, we don't tell them.
So, I've never seen someone come before for an appeal or interpretation, it's a full-on application.
We have had them in the past.
I guess it was.
Yeah, we've, we've had people come before us because of, in fact, we've had zone, the past zoning officer come and testified to us as to why he thought it wasn't, and they, it was exactly the same circumstances he's saying. They came before us saying, we disagree, but if you find in his favor, here's the variance we want.
So, that's, that's scheduled, and that's not a formal thing like this, it's not?
Exactly, it's a hearing. I'll, I'll, I'll let you in on something, I did it once, uh, as an attorney representing an applicant many, many moons ago, uh, and was actually successful.
So, they passed off coming with a good attorney, and they're coming for a, uh, for an appeal or interpretation, I just never, I mean, this is kind of like my first time hearing.
Yeah, they're rare.
I would imagine that there's always been a, no, I don't need that person coming through the door, right? And, but I've never seen them here, so I'm not standing at the door when they come through.
When I, when I did it, it was an A, B, C and D, that's why you don't let me do them. But, uh, I, I appealed the zoning officer's decision, I won't bore you with the story, but, uh, and I said, and also interpret it my way, not the zoning officer's way, and by the way, if you agree with me, it's a C variance, give me, give my client a C variance, and if you don't agree with me, uh, and it's a D variance, give my client a D variance.
You have all bases covered.
I, I, I went through the A, Bs and Ds of, of zoning on that one, uh, as that turned out, uh, the board said, we don't want to reverse the board's, the zoning officer's decision, but we're gonna interpret it the way you say now and going forward, and therefore decision, but we're gonna interpret it the way you say now and going forward, and therefore your client only needs a C, not a D. Offline, I'll fill you in on what it was all about.
Do you like roll right into the application at that time?
Exactly.
Yeah. Cause they submit all the proofs for it.
That one, we actually got a unanimous approval, so whether it was a C or D, arguably, we might have won anyway, but I was glad I argued to get it down to a C, made it easier proofs, and didn't have to get five out of seven, only had to get four out of seven. I'm going fast for our new board members, but now we're gonna backtrack. Why is it sometimes four out of seven? Why is it sometimes five out of seven? Cs are a majority, Ds are a super majority. So I'm gonna go back.
And may I add, that's why it's so important, when Deborah says, are you attending, to say yes, because if we need five, we need five, and it's not fair to Deborah, and it's not fair to the applicant, if we can't guarantee that people are gonna be here.
Right.
So, you know, he doesn't want five members, he wants nine, or seven.
Well, seven, yeah.
He wants seven, and he wants all nine sitting there, because quite often, with nine members, the applicant has a second time he comes before, it's not always a one time deal. Well, if you've got all, if you've got everybody here and you have the alternates, maybe the second time, one regular member's not here, but the alternate sat, so he can, he knows about it, or he or she knows about it. So it's always good to have on those type of variances, all nine of us here.
Right, and by the way, I made a mistake, I said section eight, that's the rule, that's the bylaws provision of the municipal land use law. Seventy point one is the provision of the municipal land use law that requires us to have at least one report, annual report, generally it's only one. So I'm gonna skip over to page 42 on the PowerPoint, or the handwritten, I mean, the sheets that you have in front of you, to get into Cs and then D variances. But generally, the, what we're talking about with numbers, there are seven regular board members, seven members sit, four is a quorum. So if you are only hearing C variances, which we refer to sometimes as bulk variances or dimensional variances, for a particular application, you can have as few as four, and that's okay, it's three out of four, you know, majority for passage. Preferable to have seven or closer to seven, but it's okay. When you get to the Ds, of course, just to go back to the math, if you need five yes votes, you can't get five yes votes out of four people. There's an old joke about, it involves politics in Hudson County, I'm not gonna get into it, but you could read between the lines, or if you're old enough like me to remember the joke. But the fact of the matter is, for D variances, you want at least five board members, and think about it, if you're the applicant, you gotta go five for five, run the table, right? You'd prefer to have six or seven board members there to hear the application, so that it's, you know, five one or five two, but you could still get your five and pass. So in fairness to the applicants, we try to provide the full complement of the board, the forum, we're volunteers.
If I may interject to you, there have been times when we have had a D variance, the applicant's been sitting here, we've only had five voting members present.
Yeah.
And then we give the applicant the opportunity
Choice, yeah.
To either go forward without a vote, or, you know, go or carry to another date when we can assure them that we will have seven voting members.
But that, that is unfair to us as members, because we've showed up here and it had to be canceled, and it's unfair to the applicant, because now he has to pay his experts twice for showing up here. So just.
Well, and it backs up other members.
Right, it backs up other applicants.
Right.
So I'm speaking to the choir here, but please, you know, make every effort to be available, and if you're not, let Deborah know as soon as possible, because it's always better to avoid that situation and not have to do it in person, if we have to adjourn it.
And just while we're on the subject, you may ask, well, how does somebody who misses a meeting come back the next meeting and know what happened and vote? And the answer is, you have to watch the video, listen to the audio tape, or if there happens to be a written transcript, sometimes with big applications, applicants will have their own stenographer do expedited written transcripts, you know, read it, but you have to read and/or watch and/or listen to the entirety of what you missed, and then you sign a certification that Deb will give you, that I'll notarize or Chris will notarize, and that you did so, so that you are now qualified to continue to hear the case and ultimately vote.
And it's a lot easier now. When I first started, it was only tape, there was no video. At least now, you can watch it without falling asleep. Hopefully.
That's right, that's right.
Listening to it was definitely a snoozer.
So bulk variances, C variances. There are C ones and C twos, just like in the statute. Steve loves it when the statute matches up. The, and those are not two types of variances, those are two alternative ways in which an applicant can prove an entitlement to a certain type of variance. So what are bulk variances? They are bulks and dimensions, they are setbacks, front, side, rear yard setback. Zoning ordinances will always say that particular structures can all, in zones and different lots, can only be, have to be at least X feet setback from the front property line, the side property line, the rear yard property line, can only be so tall, can only have so much impervious coverage, which, or building coverage, building coverage is a footprint of a building, one floor, that's it, that's what covers the ground. Impervious coverage is the building and any other pervious, no, impervious covering, driveways, accessory structures, et cetera. Why? Because I'm told by minds much greater than mine, like engineers, like Joe, if it's not grass and ground covered, the water's not gonna go through, and therefore it's gonna run off to other people's property. So that's a simple explanation, because when it comes to that stuff, they don't get any simpler to me. So, so, so those are bulk and dimensional and coverage variances. Those are C variances. And what are the ways in which an applicant can prove them to you, an entitlement to them? And let me take a step back, as I always take a lot of steps back. All, the proofs for every kind of variance, in a real broad sense, are the same. The applicant has to prove both the positive criteria and the negative criteria. What is and isn't the positive criteria and a negative criteria changes based on whether it's a C one, a C two, or certain other D variances, but it's, there's always gonna be a positive criteria and a negative criteria. Only in land use can you require somebody to prove the negative, I love it. So, but we'll talk more about that later. So, so, what is a, so you know what kinds of variances we're talking about? Bulks, setbacks, dimensional, heights, that kind of thing. One way they could prove it is a C one, what I call, what I call, what we call the undue hardship, I didn't make anything up, but the bad jokes. An undue hardship variance, and that, for the positive criteria for an undue hardship variance, a C one variance, and I'm just gonna paraphrase, because I've been doing this too long, you have to look at the specific property, and there has to be something about the property, that's unique, topographical situation, the size, narrowness, environmental constraints on the property, there may be wetlands, feel free when I get, you know, to help me out, guys and gals. Something that makes it unique that results, or buildings that are lawfully preexisting on the lot can also cause this, or any combination of the above, that's so unique that it makes the enforced, the strict enforcement of the particular ordinance, thou shalt be at least 10 feet setback from the side yard, or whatever the ordinance is, makes it an undue hardship on the applicant, or extreme, extremely impracticable, there's certain language, I gotta double check the language, but it, you know, it's not impossible, okay? But makes it extremely impractical, if not an undue hardship, on the applicant to strictly, bless you, strictly conform with that requirement. If they demonstrate that to you, they've demonstrated the positive criteria for the C one. The negative cri, I'm gonna say the negative criteria for both Cs in a minute. The alternative way in which they can prove the positive criteria under the C two, or flexible C, and literally in the statute, C one and C two, this is all explained in the statute. NJSA 40:55 capital D dash 70, C one, C two. The flexible C is just that, a little more flexible. And basically, what they have to demonstrate to you is that one or more of the purposes of zoning are advanced by the project, and candidly, that's not that difficult to do. A non exhaustive list of the purposes of zoning are at section two of the municipal land use law, and they are, the list that's non exhaustive is quite long, and it's fairly, I don't wanna say vague, and subjective, but I'll say that it's fairly vague and subjective. So, so, so you have that, you have to prove that. And they have to show that the benefits of you granting the variance substantially, never forget substantially, outweigh the detriments associated therewith. And oftentimes, remember, there's always a detriment associated with an exception or request for a variance, because you're deviating from the rule, the law that had a purpose, that is being impaired to some degree by deviating from it, but, but the benefits may substantially outweigh, and oftentimes, that comes into play when you have these conditions, where you, and the board attorneys, like Chris and myself, always make sure we get the applicant to stipulate the conditions of approval. You know, if the board so desires, would you agree to do the following if there's, if your application is approved? Boom, 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 boom. Those conditions are meant to bring the detriments down, minimize, mitigate against them, mitigate them, so as, in comparison, the benefits that might have been outweighed by the detriments now might not only outweigh those detriments in your balancing scales of justice mind, right, but may actually, the benefits may actually substantially outweigh the detriments. So that, if they can demonstrate that to you, advance the purposes, one or more purposes of zoning, and demonstrate that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments associated with the variance request, they've proven the positive criteria under the alternative C two, or flexible C variance. You may ask, well, you know, what if they prove both? They don't get any extra points, it's just a good thing, you know, they, you know, you're not restricted to prove it. So a good applicant's attorney or professional planner is, if there's a fair argument to make on both the C one and C two, make it. I always think of going on a boardwalk and throwing the darts, you know, the more darts you give me for five bucks, the more darts I'm gonna take, 'cause I don't have good aim, and I wanna hit that balloon and win a prize. So, so, so you should generally, I think, pursue that, but unless you're in a situation where you could lose credibility, 'cause one's really weak, then, but that's a strategic decision, you don't have to worry about that, you're the judges and jurors, you're not the applicant.
Before you go forward, I just wanna talk a little bit about the benefits, because what is clear, I think, in case law, is the benefits have to be to the general public.
Yes, thank you.
Not just to the applicant.
And oftentimes, people.
That was my question, who is it for?
Yeah.
The general public, the municipality, the next door neighbor, the applicant?
Well, the next door neighbor's the general public.
All of the public.
The immediate general public, but might not be the, you know, the whole general public.
The general public is everybody but the applicant, basically, that are in the community.
Because sometimes we have, we've had people come in, let's say, they want an enormous backyard patio and pool, or whatever, and they'll, you know, they'll say the benefits outweigh the detriments, well, to them.
Right.
And in that instance, it's hard to prove that there's a benefit to the general public, but that is, that is what the board should be thinking about, really.
And thank you, and if I could dovetail off that, because that applies both to the C one, the hardship, not a personal hardship. This isn't about, you know, it's gonna cost them more money, or they're not gonna be able to get their swing set, or whatever it is, it's a hardship because of the unique circumstances of the lot or, and/or the buildings that are lawfully on it. That's not a personal hardship, but a, from a zoning and planning perspective. Same with the benefits, the benefits, not personal, but from a zoning and planning perspective, are better, it's a better, there's one way, one doctrine is Kramer case, the benefit, it's a better alternative than, than, than the, what would be conforming with the ordinance. Sometimes people will come, you'll say to yourself, you know what? If they conform with the ordinance, it would've been worse than what they're asking for, the variance they're asking for. This is actually a better planning alternative than what, than what would have been in compliance with the ordinance. So it always has to be public, not personal, both with respect to hardship and with respect to the benefits substantially outweighing the detriments.
Steve, could I throw something in there?
I am.
Trying to adjust yourself. Just a couple things I wanted to mention, I thought they were worthy. First off, when it comes to the types of C variances you might see, as Steve mentioned, typically it's bulk regulations, right, your setbacks, things of that nature.
Impervious coverage.
Impervious coverage, height, right. I figured I'd just throw this out there, there's other, like, types of C variances beyond that you might not, like, when I first got into this, I never would've expected, like, the dimensions of signs, for example, some towns will even regulate how large the text can be on signs. In certain instances, they treat it as, you know, as it would be a C variance if you wanted to have, you know, too small of a typeface, or something like that, or a sign of a certain size. Additionally, another example would be like disturbance of slopes, like, in Long Hill, also, if you're disturbing a slope in, you know, usually they haven't categorized, like, you know, up to 15% of an incline, or up to 25% of the 30%. If you're disturbing a certain amount of those slopes, then you also have to get a C variance. So that's kind of what I wanted to mention on that front. Also, when it comes to hardships, I figured I'd just throw this out there as, you know, just an example to wrap your head around what would constitute a hardship. The classic one I always come back to is a corner lot, right? So on a corner lot, you have two front yards, the ordinance will say, like, you know, you can't have, I don't know, a fence in your front yard, right, for example. I'm not saying Long Hill in particular, but just as a general matter. So in that case, it's a classic example, okay, I wanna put a fence on my side yard, well, it's not technically side yard, it's my secondary front yard, it just looks like it's, you know, a side yard.
Yeah, it's the side of the house, but it's the front yard to the street.
Right, exactly, and because that's a, you know, you have two front yards, that's kind of like a textbook type of hardship, depending on what the application is, right? Like, if you're trying to put a shed in your backyard, you can't just say, oh, I have two front yards, therefore I should be entitled to a shed. Well, no, that doesn't really play into the fact that you have two front yards, if that makes any sense, so, yeah, that's my spiel, just wanted to do my color commentary, justify my presence here.
That was one of the things we wanted the ordinance to fix in town, we wanted them to define that if you pick a front lawn, that's your front lawn, and the rest would be considered side yard, regardless if there's a street there or not. That was one of the issues we had, because it would make it so easy.
Well, sorry, we can talk, we can, I don't wanna interrupt Steve.
No, please. Steve wants you to interrupt him.
No. In that instance, I think, most ordinances require corner lots to have two front yards, but what I think we wanted to do is have them pick, of the other two yards, pick one of them to be a rear yard.
Right.
And the reason being is because the rear yard setbacks are much deeper.
Right.
And that's good for everybody. It's good for the applicant, because it gives them a backyard, and it's good for their neighbors, because it.
Gives the applicant a backyard.
It gives, yeah, there's a greater buffer, and so, anyway, sorry.
No, you're right.
So those are, those are the criteria, the positive criteria on the C variances, whether they're proven to either C one, the C two, or both. Of course, if it's neither, you know, they gotta, they're not gonna get an approval. But that's the positive criteria. The negative criteria, the tough part is, there's two prongs of it, the good part is, it's the same negative criteria for a C one and a C two, and for that matter, the verbiage is the same for some D variances as well. So let's talk about the two prongs of the negative criteria, the negatives that they have to prove to you. The first is, they have to prove that their project will have no substantial detriment to the public good. Like most laws, that's a bunch of words, what does it mean? And thankfully, it works out that way, that's how lawyers like me get jobs, because if everybody knew what it meant, then, you know, we wouldn't be here. And Shakespeare would've had his way. But the, 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 no substantial detriment to the public good in shorthand means that the project is not substantially out of character with the neighborhood. Now, neighborhood, the definition of what is a neighborhood can change, it may be the 200-foot perimeter around the property, that is what is used by the tax assessor to decide, a list, who provides a list to applicants to decide who they have to personally notice, in addition to noticing by publication, anybody who has property that even touches within 200 feet of the perimeter of the subject property that's coming before you for relief. They're the ones that get the special notice, because they're sort of a super interested party by definition, and that may be the neighborhood. The neighborhood might be a little, depending upon the size and what the project is, might be a little smaller, might be bigger. is, might be a little smaller, might be bigger, depending upon who's impacted by, you know, significantly by the development. But, so they have to prove that first prong, no substantial detriment to public good. They have to prove to you that their project as a whole is not substantially out of character with the neighborhood. Remember, substantial. Might be out of character, but it's not, they have to prove it's not substantially out of character. The other negative they have to prove, the second prong of the negative criteria, that their project will not substantially impair the zone plan, which is essentially the master plan, or the zoning ordinances. So remember what I talked about earlier, there's a legislative body, the governing body, that together with the hybrid planning board implements, adopts and implements our ordinances, zoning ordinances, land use ordinances. Well, that's their job. We are the quasi-judiciary, we're not supposed to be quasi-judicial activists. We're not supposed to legislate from this bench, right? Is the old theory, or hopefully still the theory. The, but we're not getting there, we're not going there. They, the, but, so, if you feel that what they are asking for rises to the level of substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the master plan and the zoning ordinance, essentially what they're asking you to do is legislate from the bench. And we don't zone by variance, we zone by ordinance. We go through the legislative process. These are allowing exceptions, but we don't, you know, the exception can, what do you call it, evaporate the rule, or, you know. So, so, so again, no substantial impairment. So in essence, if it rises to the level of being a usurpation or arrogation, I like to show off those SAT words because I didn't get them right back then. The, the, if it's a usurpation or arrogation of the authority of the legislative body, the governing body and the planning board to, to zone, well, then they're asking for too much and they haven't proven to you that second prong of the negative criteria. So that's what they have to prove on the bulk variances. And they got to get four out of, well, they have to get a majority out of however many of you are there that night, hopefully always seven, voting members. There are D variances, those are sort of the super variances, right? So there's an increased burden of proof that the applicant has to prove to you an entitlement to this relief. And they have to get five out of seven, or five out of six, or five out of five, or, you know, I'll leave the Hudson joke. The, 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 what are these D variances? Well, a D1 use variance, that's the apex, the most difficult variance to get. That is, allow me to do something, a use that is not allowed in the zone. Extreme example, it's a residential zone, I want to have a commercial use, right smack in the middle of all the single-family houses. That's an example of a D1 use variance. The proofs on those are listed on page 54. On the posi-, again, everything's positive and negative criteria. Positive criteria, they have to show special reasons. What does that mean? There are three types of special reasons. Some uses are inherently beneficial uses. Some are listed in the MLUL as inherently beneficial uses. Some are, are found by cases. Rely, by the way, always rely on your board attorneys, your, your, your engineer, your, you have a great attorney, and then you have me. You have a great planner and you have a great engineer and a great zoning officer. Avail yourself of those resources. And ask questions. Hold us accountable, put us to the task. Ask us the questions. Don't, don't, to make sure you have the right information to decide cases accurately. We'll let you know if something is an inherently beneficial use. You'll look at your planner's report, you'll get an engineer's report. The planner's report will probably focus more on the uses. Liz and, and Chris and I will let you know if it's an inherently beneficial use by statute or, or case law. Certainly, the applicant, if it might be an inherently beneficial use, is going to say, it's an inherently beneficial use. Why? Because that's one of those, not go straight to jail and do not collect $200, but go straight to satisfying the positive criteria. If you can establish that you have an inherently beneficial use, you've established the positive criteria automatically. It's presumed to be in the general pub-, public, general welfare, that particular use. That's one of three ways of showing the positive criteria for D1 use variance. The second is an undue hardship. We've heard that before. It's sort of a, should, should be at least a elevated undue hardship analysis, that it would be a, an undue hardship for the applicant to strictly comply with that use. They should be, have to show that in essence their, their lot would be zoned into economic inutility, total economic inutility, like you've basically condemned my lot, it has no value. That's very rare. But it's at least a potential second of three ways in which somebody could establish the positive criteria for D1 use variance relief. The third, the most prevalent one, is what's called particular site suitability. The site is particularly well-suited for this use, even though the use is a non-conforming use, a commercial use in a residential zone, or as an extreme example. Does not have to be the only site in town that fits the bill. Our courts in the Price v. Hamedu case, Judge, Justice Hohns, outstanding jurist, still should be one. That's my political statement. The, 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 or at least one of them. She found that particular site suitability doesn't mean uniquely suited, it just means particularly well-suited. Something about that site that cries out for that non-conforming use. The, the, that's particular site suitability. The, so those are three different ways of establishing special reasons for establishing the positive criteria on a D1 use variance. Negative criteria, those same two prongs. Thankfully, you know, they made it relatively easy so Steve didn't have to remember too much because that would have been a problem. So the first prong, no substantial detriment to the public good, not substantially out of character with the neighborhood, as the appropriate neighborhood is defined, and no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. We're not zoning by variance, we're not stealing the job of the governing body and the planning board. However, with D1 use variances, there's an enhanced burden of proof on the applicant because, remember, that's the toughest one to get. And it should be. It's, it's, it's a, hey, let me do something that's not allowed. And that enhanced quality of proof is what's called a Medici quality of proof. It wasn't a Greek philosopher, just happened to be the name of the case, Medici. That's a pretty cool name, though, I think. And the, the, and the Medici enhanced quality of proof means that, in essence, on, what I view it as more the second prong of the negative criteria, and that is, the applicant has to establish to you what we call a reconciliation. If the governing body did not list this use as a permitted use, and therefore it is a non-permitted use, and it's remained a non-permitted use for years and years and decades and decades through multiple master plan adoptions and reexaminations and changes to the ordinance, well, hey, heck, why? You know, how can you reconcile to me a right to, with, you know, not usurp the role of the governing body in adopting ordinances, but allow, reconcile with me how I can allow you to have this non-conform use even though it's not listed? That's the Medici reconciliation or the Medici enhanced quality of proof. And the, and, and there's different ways of doing it. For example, there may have been changes in the area, they, they may be particularly, this particular site may be near a highway, and that's what makes it different, and that access to that highway that maybe didn't previously exist is a reason why perhaps it was not on the list of uses because, remember, governing bodies don't always, you know, they got to catch up, in fairness to governing bodies. They're not, you know, you, a use may fit a particular lot, but it may not have yet been listed as, as a conforming use in that zone. Another example is a, a new type of use.
Urgent care.
What's that?
Urgent care.
Urgent care, right? You know, we, we think of the things that we have nowadays and, but if we're old enough to remember, we didn't always have them. And so-
Assisted living things are fairly new.
Assisted liv-, oh, different things. So, so it may just be that they haven't made the list yet.
Yeah, micro buries.
Micro buries, what have you. So, so, so the use may not have yet made the list, so, so there may be a way of reconciling it that way. So those, you're getting hopefully a feel for the, what the burden of proof is for both the C1s and C2s, and now for the highest of the high, the D1s. D, D2 can get a little, the D2 through 6, you're going to see less of, okay? You're mostly going to see bulk variances, the C variances and the D1 use variances. But I'll run through real quick the others that are listed. D2 is what we call an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. Lot of words. Makes us lawyers happy. Right? The more words, the merrier. The, the, basically, if you have a use that is on your site, on your lot, that was conforming with the ordinance, zoning ordinance previously, or for example, might have been predated the zoning ordinance, right? Lots have had structures and uses on them for, for centuries. Zoning's only been around since 1920s, Euclidean zoning. But, so, so if you had, you have what you've heard called a grandfathered right, or grandparented right. But the, the, so if you have a right to, to a use or a structure being on your lot, even though it's a non-permitted use, or even if the structure is too close to, to the front yard or what have you, you, you don't lose that right under land use. You have your grandfathered right, it's preserved. But if you want to expand that, say, that use that was a non-permitted use, you want to make the, the factory bigger in that residential zone, you want to subdivide the lot, right? There's something called the raspberries case with two Z's, not the fruit. But the, 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 and that was a case where the use didn't get any bigger, but the lot on top of, below the use, on which the use was located, got smaller. Well, proportionately, that use expanded because it was on half the lot. So any kind of expansion or intensification of a pre-existing use, the applicant has to come and, and meet a burden of proof. It's not as difficult as the D1 use variance, and it shouldn't be because they're only expanding what, what was a grandfathered right to that use, they're not coming to you and saying, let me just do a use that's not permitted. I won't go through all the proofs there, but you got, they also have the negative criteria as well, say, two prongs, and you're focusing on the expansion, not on the, what, obviously what was grandparented. I'm going to keep hitting your mic, I'm sorry.
You can say grandfather.
Say grandfather. The, this is, I talk with my hands, you'd think, right? But my, my last name was different. But the, 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 you can take the boy out of Jersey, but you can't take the Jersey out of the boy. The, D3, keep them on track.
Just can I, just before you go, this is perhaps a nuance, but it's interesting, I think it's interesting. Things that have, were approved by a D1 use variance, if they expand, they don't go to, it's not a D2, it goes back to being a D1.
Absolutely.
And so for something, in this board, for example, if the assisted living facility is built and they want to expand, they have to come back for a D1.
Right.
Which is, people don't always know that. They'll say, no, 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 it's a D2 because it was, it exists, or whatever. They say, no, it was approved by use variance, they have to come back.
Some land use lawyers and planners might even make that mistake.
D2 is only lawfully existing prior to zoning.
Pre-existing non-conform, right.
Pre-existing conforming, right.
So you have, you have, you have three different kinds. You have a pre-existing use, that pre-existed the zoning rendering it a non-permitted use. You have a, and, you have a non-permitted use on the other end, which requires the D1. And then you have a, a previously approved use, approved by a zoning board of adjustments such as yourselves.
But it was still not conforming.
That, that, if that's going to be expanded, whether you're expanding a, whether you're asking for a new use or expanding a previously approved by D1 use variance use, both, either one of those requires a D1 use variance. It's only the pre-existing one that didn't exist because of a zoning board allowing it that, that, that is grandfathered and, and would be an expansion or intensification would be a D2.
But it's, it's addition, in addition to existing pre-
So you're before the zoning, lawfully existing, or you were, or you were compliant and the zoning changed.
Exactly, exactly. Which has happened in-
Those are the only two bringing it to a D2.
Right.
But we, we've had grandfathered applications. We had it in Barrett Roofing, and we also had it with Stone Hotel, where they were saying, we had, we were grandfathered, we had this, you know, this use, and we kept this use, and, you know, and then we had the Barrett Roofing, oh, we've always done that! And so, you know, it, it's, those are the hardest ones because it all depends on people's memory and who witnesses they produce and what they testify to, and, you know, what the photographs they provide, and it's not that easy.
But the burden of proof is on the applicant.
Right.
And there are some mechanisms to help in the process. Section 68. Section 68 of the municipal land use law provides for certificates of non-conformity. So what happens is this, you, you say to yourself, well, how do we know exactly what the use was before the ordinance changed and rendered it a non-conforming use? One way is you get a certificate of non-conformity. It's the barometer, sets the barometer, so that you know, this is what pre-existed, so anything above it is a, is an expansion or intensification of that pre-existing use. And people can ask for certificates of non-conformity from the, either from the zoning officer within one year, or thereafter, from the zoning board of adjustment that has the authority then to grant that certificate of non-conformity. Otherwise, it's ultimately up to the applicant to demonstrate to you what their use was and when, and when the ordinance rendered it non-conforming, and what they had, you know, to sort of give you that certificate of non-conformity, that barometer, so that you could figure out what is over and above that use.
And I wanted to add in a point, an interesting point from a zoning officer's perspective. On a daily basis, weekly basis, whatever, I hear from residents the term grandfathered. So, and I'm just putting it out there for whoever's listening, we don't, I, we don't really use the term grandfathered.
Right.
People say, well, you know, this expansion of this house is grandfathered because I'm saving this wall or that wall. No, no. There's really grandfathered use, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, in my experience, it was a term that was used decades ago. Now, I will say that if records in municipalities are kept well, that me as a zoning officer has only been here six years versus, you know, the how many hundreds of years that Long Hill's been around. If I can go to records and I can find something, okay, you live in a two-family home, but you don't have any records that states that there's a two-family home on your property, all right, well, let me go see what we have. If I can pull records, like our property record cards, if it says grandfathered, two-family, guess what? In that case, I'll use the term grandfathered. Because it's in the records.
Right.
So if there's a situation, especially if somebody comes to us in a use variance situation, well, you know, oh, well, I've been, I've been running this business on this property, okay, great. But unfortunately, we don't have any records for it. Whether it was a flood in the 1950s or whatever, so if you, if an applicant cannot produce the documents to prove that a use was grandfathered, or that they had permission sometime in the past, then my job is to send them back to the board.
Yeah.
And start over again.
To either prove it to us or ask for that variance.
Correct.
And, and applicants who do it by testimony, by photographs, by records, by neighbor, well, you know, sometimes there's a history book that was written and maybe it mentioned it in there. Any manner in which they can show that that use somehow existed there prior to an ordinance, they can come back and show us. And, and, like I said, it all depends on people's, what scrap of paper they can produce.
But, burden of proof, yes.
So, so, D's being use variances sound like they're very, more often, you know, on a commercial or a business property. Are there D's and how would they be for a residential property? I mean, we're saying-
Two families in a single family zone. Three families in a, in a singular, two families.
Okay, so again, that's the use. So it has nothing to do with the structure, so when you have like, a house that's already built too close to a property line and they want to bump up a level, that's not in the D world at all.
Well, we're going to get there, that depends. Because your D6 is, is a significant height variances.
Right, that's the-
That's, it's a bulk variance, but if it's very high, and I'll get to that in a moment, then it rises to the level of being a D variance.
No pun intended.
No pun intended. But the, as well as floor area ratio, which I'll talk about in a minute. But, so, but what I'm going to talk about in a second is D3 conditional use variances. Now, there is a section of the zoning ordinance that has permitted uses for different lots, you know, there's different zones, excuse me. But then there are conditional use variances. But then there are conditional use variances. There's a zoning, a section of the zoning ordinance in every municipality that says these uses are permitted as long as they satisfy the following conditions. Oftentimes, maybe houses of worship, institution-type uses. Houses of worship, home offices, Liz, Deb, throw a few out there.
Take care.
Thanks for the drive-through.
Yeah.
Yeah, drive-through.
The one issue, I will say, in Long Hill is the conditional use standards, they should be very qualitative.
Quantitative, yes.
And unfortunately, in Long Hill, they're very qualitative. So, which means it's a little bit like vague, you know? Oh, it's, it's not gonna impact the neighborhood. Or, you know, something like that, that's one of the conditions. Well, I don't know.
Yeah, usually a conditional use would be, this is a permitted use as long as it's not, the lot is at least X acres, and it's not located closer than X thousand feet to a school, or whatever, or whatever it may be.
Can I, can I just ask you, and I'll ask you this, because there are in the ordinance, some things like we've run into, where, for example, upstairs apartments, and there's conditions, but it's not a conditional use.
I know, it's not in the conditional use, section of the ordinance.
But they're conditions. It's say, oh, you can't exceed density, you can't exceed, you can't do X, Y, and Z.
I'm gonna reserve my right to have a different opinion, should an application come before us. But generally, the, it's supposed to be in the conditional use ordinance section of the zoning ordinance, for technically to be a conditional use that requires D3 variance relief if, not if the use satisfies all the conditions, but if the use violates one or more of the conditions. And it's not quite as difficult to prove as a, as a use variance, nor should it be, because it's actually a permitted use. It's just violating one or more of the conditions of permitting it. If it conformed with all the conditions, it actually still has to go to a board, the planning board, because it's a conforming conditional use. They still have the gatekeeper and blessed, so to speak, to approve it, but not give D3 variance relief. Zoning board, anything but a D, comes to us. Planning board can't do D variances, only us. Zoning board.
What if somebody wants to put a tiny home on their property? That's why they have to come to the board. So an existing, single-family property.
Oh, that's interesting.
Because I get, I get questions about this every day.
When you say a tiny home, what, what, what is it deviating from? Minimum, minimum square foot, floor area?
It's, yeah, it would deviate from minimum square foot, it would also deviate if it would be a detached home.
A second house, a second home?
Secondary, primary residence.
So then it's an accessory dwelling.
Two on the same lot.
That is becoming, that's becoming.
To principal, so that's a use variance.
We got along your road.
Yeah. And, and it could potentially depend on ordinances. There are towns that are allowing, that allow and are, and are allowing accessory dwelling units under certain, certain, certain circumstances. They're becoming conditional uses, so it could be, but.
Which we do have in the ordinance, we have some allowance, or similar things, but.
So it depends on where it's located in the ordinance, what the ordinance says, that's why. You don't have to worry about what comes to you. Deb, and Joe, and Liz, and I, and Chris, we have to worry about that, and make sure it gets to the right board. I don't wanna bore you with what goes to which board, but if it's a D variance, it's coming to us. If it's a site plan subdivision or conforming conditional use approval, it's coming to the planning board. If it's one of those three things that I just said, subdivision, site plan, or conforming conditional use variance approval, and it has bulk variances with it, C variances with it, planning board. If it has one single D variance along with those site plans and stuff, coming to us. And finally, if it just has variances, even if it just sees, coming to us. So it's sort of like rock, rock, paper, scissors. I didn't, I never, my, I have two sisters, so they, they, they survived. And they, 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 yeah, younger sisters too, but, so, yeah, I had the under, not the over. But the, but the, but they did the rocks, paper, scissors. And so certainly, D variance automatically to us, just variances automatically, so it's sort of a rock, paper, scissors thing.
And then, single-family automatically to us.
Yeah, well, there's no site plan required for a sing, or one or two family. So, but, but I don't wanna get too far into what the planning board does, but, but there are jurisdictional issues that will resolve before, and make sure the right ones get to you, and the wrong, and the planning board ones get to the planning board.
What about home offices? Now, during COVID, people didn't go out to work, they worked at home. Maybe they converted a bedroom, or left the bedroom as it was, and just put a laptop in it.
Funny, funny you bring that up. We had one of those a few weeks ago, the planning board. It was a, you know, a guy was a home medical professional acupuncturist. He was putting a, wanted to open up a.
Were we 45 days post-approval?
Nope.
It might not be. Can't.
We have a memorial.
Hypothetically.
It's in the ordinance, there's a section in the ordinance.
It was, it was a home office use, residential, single-family dwelling, he wanted to put it on, and went to the planning board, to answer your question.
Yeah, yeah.
And he didn't have any variances.
Depends on the ordinance, but, but we allow that as a permitted use.
With standards.
With standards, but it wasn't a conditional use where one of the conditions was violated. It was a permitted use where one of the standards actually was, needed deviation relief. And that's why it went to the, it went to the planning board. Was it, was that, what, was it a site plan?
It needed minor site plan approval.
Yeah, minor, the standard required minor site plan approval, that's it.
Did the planning board keep long pins and needles?
Ah.
I couldn't resist that.
Thank you. I need the company.
And the recording's online, if you wanna check it out, that's all.
No, 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 that's a good, that's a good one. And remember to tip your waiters and waitresses.
But that's actually, that's actually a good area of the ordinance that we're gonna be looking at, and it's been on my agenda for a while to look at, to revise, because now that we've had a major pandemic in the world, as everybody knows, everybody wants to work from home more. So how do you solve that without forcing residents to, you know, go for a site plan?
And that's the beauty of zoning, because the ordinances change as the times change, and, and so there's a lot to take into account. Nothing more important, in my opinion, at the municipal level than land use. And I represent municipalities as municipal attorney as well, so I'm, I'm not just a land use lawyer, but there's nothing more important, in my opinion. Taxes and what you could do with your land.
Is there any case law on home offices specifically, and the right of municipalities to govern it, like, that whether the use has to have some commercial aspect, like, for example, patrons coming to the residential.
As opposed to ones that.
Or deliveries being made. If none of that is, and if it's all e-commerce, can you, is there any case law on, you're not allowed to govern it, not allowed to put it in your.
Well, I don't, I'm not familiar necessarily with cases, say you can't regulate it, but certainly, you know, if somebody's just working at home that day, you know what I mean, you know, in their bedroom, or the spare bedroom that's used as an office, you know, that's generally not a home office use. Usually there's some aspect that renders it, at least, for lack of a better term, help me out here, Liz, quasi-commercial?
Yeah.
Which means you have customers coming, you have patients coming.
Something.
Is there definitions where it includes, if the person has an office to go to, and they choose to work from home, that constitutes a home office. That that's specifically not permitted, but if they don't have an office, then they can't.
Think that's overreaching.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna take us back, I apologize, but it's a good aside issue.
It may depend on how the ordinance is.
I think the municipality would have more of a say if the home office entailed people parking on your property, people coming in and out. There's activities that might affect the neighborhood, traffic. If there's none of that, I don't think the municipality would have any right to.
Because it's all about, remember to balance. We always go, I always go back, we should, I think, all always go back to the balance. Property rights of the homeowner, or property owner, I should say, it's commercial, whatever it is, and the property rights, and the right to, to quiet use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. Balance, and the public as a whole.
As populations have become more dense, especially in New Jersey, where the densely populated state, most densely populated state, zoning is very important, because, you know, you don't want something next to you that's gonna devalue your property, and, you know, it's, it's a balancing act.
D3 uses, so I was talking about the conditional uses. How do you prove an entitlement to them? There was a case called the Coventry Square case, Coventry Square standard. Basically, what it says is on the positive criteria, because there's always those two prongs and a negative criteria. But on the positive criteria, in order to demonstrate an entitlement to a conditional use variance, you have to be able to show, as the applicant, they have to prove to you that the site, something about the site, or some things about the site, can accommodate the problems, detriments, problems associated with deviating from the one or more conditions that they're deviating from. So if they're closer than a thousand feet to a school, well, what about the site that can accommodate the problems associated with being too close to a school? What was the intent and purpose of the, that, that buffer distance of a thousand feet from a school to begin with? Those are, those are the types, or why do you have to be on such a large lot? What was the intent and purpose of that? What about this particular site accommodates it? Maybe the site is smaller than the minimum required for that particular use to be a permitted conditional use. But maybe that lot is surrounded by a green, what do you call it?
Green acres?
Green acres, thank you, you know, preserve, so then who cares? You know, the birds, but, and, you know, but, but people aren't living nearby. So, they have, they have no property rights, at least as of yet. Time will tell.
That's what you asked.
So that's who the, that's who the, I know. So it's that Coventry Square, can the site accommodate the problems associated with the deviation from the one or more conditions of the conditional use? The beauty of that Coventry Square case is the courts got tired of coming up with new standards. So a D4 and a, and a D6 uses the same standard. So what is a D4? Floor area ratio variance. I always refer to that as two pounds of baloney and a one-pound jark, so I always liked that saying. The, 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 the floor area is not the footprint of the, of the building, but it's the footprint times how many floors there are, if it's a perfectly rectangular building. I don't know. But, but, but the point is, it's how much floor area in the building divided by the, how many square feet the lot is. Hence, you know, the potential of two pounds of baloney and a one-pound, too much intensity of, of use on the lot. That was deemed by powers greater than I to be a required D variance relief, a D4 under the statute, 70D4. And again, the court, in a different case, Randolph Town Center, said, let's use that Coventry Square standard. It worked before. So now the standard, so the standard for proving the positive criteria for floor area ratio variance is can the site accommodate a floor area ratio that much greater than what is permitted under the ordinance? It's kind of a cop, right? Can the site accommodate it? You know, that's, it's a, you know, it's leaving a heck of a lot of discretion to the board. But there are parameters, and you're guided by, as I said, when Chris is here, good counsel, and, and good engineers and good planners. The D5 is a density variance, you're rarely, if ever, gonna see those.
Please see them here.
But you'll see them here, Liz is gonna tell you all about them.
No, no. That's one of the standards we see often violated when people want their, in, in the village center areas, sort of like on Main Avenue, or whatever, where we've seen apartments. And when it comes, there's standards, you can't go above five baloney units per acre. And these, some of these buildings are very old, and are very small lots, and they already have three or four apartments. And then when you translate that to what is it per acre? It's like, you know, 20 units per acre. And so it's much higher than is permitted, and so they do see that.
Yeah, and the density is the number of dwelling units. An apartment is a dwelling unit, per gross land area to be developed. So where that comes into play, you have to have a D5, a density variance. And again, the standards are essentially equate to the, can the site accommodate the problems associated with it. When you get into the world of, try not to, affordable housing, that I spend some of my days and nights in, it takes on an even greater, but, but, but that's density. The last one, D6, is height. And I lied before, right, because I said all-dimensional variances or C variances, including height, but not when it's really, really high, just when it's really high. So, when it's really, really high, that's a D6 variance. And the way that's defined is if the height is more than 10 feet above the maximum permitted height.
Which would be 40, 50.
Which, well, for a residential, well, actually, or, or 10% higher than the, a maximum permitted height, then that's a D variance. Why? Because if it's a 50-story, 50-foot height limit, and you have a, a, well, let me strike that. If, if, most single-family dwellings are 35-foot height limits. And while in order to be 10 feet higher, it'd have to be 45 feet, how's that for math? The, it would be 10% higher if it's three and a half feet or more, about 38.5 feet or more. Because proportionately, for shorter, shorter, shorter structures, like single-family dwelling units, it's deemed to be a significant height deviation to go even just 3.5 feet above, because proportionally, that's 10% or, or more, if you go above 38.5 feet, than what is permitted. So those are deemed to be significantly, or substantial height variances. And they go, then they rise, literally and figuratively, from Cs to Ds. And there's a Grasso case, which, very roughly paraphrasing, is similar to the Coventry Square standard. It's a little different, but I candidly forgot exactly the verbiage. Chris probably knows it, but regardless, the, it's that same kind of, the site can accommodate the problems associated with the height. There was an interesting case involving Anglerwood Cliffs, Jacoby, I think it was, where, it was interesting to me, and others, because it sort of redefined what is the appropriate neighborhood. In that particular case, it was a very tall building that was being built on the Anglerwood Cliffs, if I recall correctly. And the neighborhood was actually determined by the Supreme Court of the state of New Jersey to include New York City, because they had a view, a vista, a vantage point to see that building.
So even if there's a river in between.
Even if there's, even if it's not, it's not New Jersey. New York, last time I looked, it's not New Jersey. But, but they tax us, but, coming in and coming out. But the, the, a lot of politics. But the, but, but the, so, so the neighborhood may not be 200 feet. It may even be across the river, potentially. So, so, but that was a height variance case, as well.
So that was in their favor, to make New York part of the neighborhood?
Well, the objectors. It was in their favor, because they were saying, if it's gonna kill the view in the city, then you gotta figure out how to fix that.
Oh, you mean if it's gonna.
It's in the Palisades, and people are saying that's a preserved historic.
Oh, okay, all right. Because I thought if they were comparing it to the height of those buildings.
Oh, no, no, no.
They were saying that the, the view of the Palisades is being.
Oh, okay, we were taken for that, okay.
Yeah, from the various variances.
They have that same thing down in the Wildwoods, that if you're a block off the ocean, and there's one of the hotels that wanna raise their park, their, their swimming pool, they were, there was objections by the people across the street, because it would block their view of the ocean. What little sliver they had of the ocean, it would block the view. I don't see where they had a right to that, but, you know? And here you have a hotel sitting there, looking like a bombed-out city, because they can't build, because they're in litigation. So it's like, and that was their right to say, well, you're, you're blocking our view.
So I'm gonna real quick rifle through 72 to 70-some, 77 or 6 or whatever, just to give you an idea of the process that you've already been experiencing, very quickly. But I invite my colleagues to jump in to fill in with some color and flavor. But these, these applications, you know, a lot happens before and after. The before is they file applications for development, they get deemed complete pursuant to checklist, they have to have all the right items, or get waivers from these items. It's all very, there are timeframes, I won't bore you with all the details. But ultimately, the application is deemed complete, it is scheduled for a hearing. Most applica, in fact, every application before you is gonna require a notice. Some planning board applications don't. That notice is both public and personal. The applicant has to publish in the newspaper, the official newspaper for a board, there's a couple. The, at least 10 days prior to the date of the hearing, so that the world can get the announcement that this application is gonna be heard before this board on such a, such a date, time, and place. And then everybody within 200 feet, as I said earlier, they get a list from the tax assessor, here's my lot, or my lots that are affected, you know, because I have a couple of lots, maybe, there's access from. of lots, maybe there's access from one into the other, what have you. Do a two-hundred-foot around it and give me all the names and addresses, or at least the addresses. There's a law now that we can't necessarily always have the names, to protect people, particularly those involved in the judiciary, and prosecution, prosecutor's office, et cetera. But you get those addresses, they have to give personal notice, either literally deliver it, or more often than not, certified mail with proof that it was certified mailed at least ten days before the hearing. That's the process of notice, to be able to appear before us. Once they appear before you, you'll ask all the relevant questions, they'll, they have the burden of proof, positive, negative criteria.
Just not to interrupt, but...
Please.
The purpose of the notice is so that anyone who may be affected by it, by flooding, by view, by any reason whatsoever, has the opportunity to come, either speak for it or against it. That's what the notice is for. It's to make sure that people have that, have skin in the game, that's going to be either financially adversely affected by some reason, or they might think they are, or they might like it. That gives them a right to come.
And they make their presentation, it may be just the applicant, him or her themselves, they may have an engineer, an architect, a planner, a lawyer, all the above depending, and they put on their proofs. Quasi, it's a, we're an administrative body, quasi-judicial. The applicant's witnesses go, then the board asks questions, the board professionals may be afforded an opportunity to ask questions of each witness, the public should be afforded an opportunity to ask questions of each witness. There's discretion for the chair, you could go through all the witnesses first, then ask them all questions, you can go one by one. There's discretion there, but it's a due process, state and federal constitution, due process clause. Everybody has their right to a fair hearing. Also confrontation clause, everybody has the right to be able to question people who are testifying, as well as those who might be testifying against. So I will and Chris will swear everybody in, including our board professionals, because they, in essence, are giving testimony, and there's law on that. Then, after each witness goes and the applicant maybe rests their case, members of the public who already have asked questions of those witnesses can then make public comment, sworn in, because it's testimony. They may have witnesses, they may have exhibits, pictures.
They may have an attorney.
They may have an attorney, in which case, if they have an attorney, they themselves cannot ask questions, only the attorney can ask questions of the applicant's witnesses, but they still can make public comment, they still can testify. Those members of the public who are represented by counsel, neighboring objectors or representative objectors. That's the process. And when it's all over, you earn your money, because you have to deliberate and decide the case, and whether, and vote. And as before, a majority for bulk variance, C variances, five or more for yes votes for D variances. Chris or I will not only remind everyone of the relief being sought, preliminary and final major site plan approval, and bulk and D variances, D one use variance, bulk variances for, et cetera, et cetera, exceptions for, et cetera, et cetera. But we will also list the conditions of approval that the applicant stipulated to, agreed to. Why? Because you're not just voting yes or no. You're voting no, they didn't meet their burden of proof, or yes, they met it with all those conditions they agreed to. And frankly, when you vote no, you're saying, no, they didn't meet their burden of proof, notwithstanding the fact that they agreed to all those conditions which might have minimized the detriments to some degree, but if it's a no vote, apparently not to a sufficient degree. That is what you are voting on. Deliberations are important, I always say, say the right thing, but don't say the wrong You know, if they met their burden of proof, they met it, if they didn't, they didn't. You're not supposed to be considering things like, well, you know, they may, we want them to make more profit or less profit, that's not part of the calculus. Tax dollars are not part of the zoning and planning calculus. We're not a governing body, we're not, we're not a policy-making body. We're considering zoning and planning proofs, like a jury or a judge in a bench trial, and we are deciding whether the applicant has met those positive or negative criteria for the relief they are seeking, in accordance with what those standards are and the evidence they presented.
Can I, you know...
Sure.
I would like our planner to just, we could comment on some of the things that we're not supposed to consider, because there is the decorative aspect of things, you know, color, things like that.
Architectural and visual.
Yeah, there's, there's been applications before this board where I've had some board members mention things that really were not things that were, that were conditions that we should have taken, we should have either granted or not granted the application for. So would you go into that a little bit?
Sure. I mean, this is something that is not settled, I think, because what we're talking about is aesthetics, I think, right?
And it's fair to say it's a gray area.
Right.
Okay, I get it.
It's not good aesthetics. Yes, and...
As long as it's not purple.
Some people will argue that one of the purposes of zoning, which Steve mentioned, you know, on page one of the municipal land use law, is to promote a desirable visual environment. And so people say, because that's a purpose of zoning, then aesthetics is a valid purpose of zoning. Other people will say, no, you can't, you've overstepped, you're, this isn't, you know, in a historic district, or this isn't, you can't sort of, say...
We're not the board of good taste.
Yeah, right.
And beauty often is in the eye of the beholder.
And you can't say, oh, that chain restaurant can't look that way. And so, but honestly, I've heard attorneys argue both sides, saying absolutely you can, and others saying, no, you're really overstepping.
To some degree, you can have architectural standards and, but listen to your board professionals on those issues, because those, and I was being facetious with the gray area, but it really is a gray area. And it depends on what you are regulating, how you're regulating it, what your ordinances say and don't say. So make us, the planners and the attorneys, and to a lesser extent on the aesthetics, perhaps, the engineers, make us do our hard job for you.
I will say, though, that when there is another harder variance, let's say a D one, and aesthetics is a consideration, it's much easier for the board to say, well, if you change the way this looks, we might be more inclined to approve it. And so I think, and we've seen that at this board. And oftentimes, applicants will say, well, it's better to work with you and get a better-looking building and get the approval.
Yeah, that's, that's a little different, because that's more architectural, where we don't want something that looks like this, we would rather have it straight, or whatever.
Yeah.
But that's true. But I mean, I just want the board members, especially the newer board members, to, you know, focus in on the things that are purposeful and meaningful in the proofs, not go off on a, on somewhat of a tangent on something that may not be that relevant.
I'll give you a technical example of that. In communities like ours, where flooding is a big concern, stormwater management is a big concern, the board needs to trust in the professionals that the technical review is within the purview of the municipality and the board. And then there are other outside agency approvals, including DEP permits and things of that nature.
Size of the retention base and things like that.
That if the development complies, is, say, a major development in stormwater rules, and the design is there in front of us, and there is a permissible path forward, it is our job as a board to review the context of the land use, to provide a decision that may still require outside agency approval. So no, if I know that a permit is not obtainable, and DEP will not grant the permit they say they can get, because the conditions of that permit won't be able to be met, I'll express that in my letter. And there may be an opportunity to work with that applicant before they come to our board, so that they can be better prepared to provide an application that can go receive the permit.
Well, the same thing with...
But if there's a permit for them to get, an individual permit, say, from DEP for flood hazard or riparian, and there's a path forward for them to go get that permit, we need to make a decision and allow them outside agency opportunity, if we were to approve them, to gain that permit for resolution compliance.
Yeah. Well, there's also where we have left the size of a detention, the size of a stormwater detention system up to your engineer. So we'll approve it, and we'll say, conditional upon our professionals approving the size, the shape, the position, and if it works right. So we shouldn't get, you know, buried in that technicality, because that's our professionals that do that.
There's still some softness to the clay with the approval. There's still some administrative leeway that doesn't affect the land use approval.
Right.
That could still change technically, either, you know, in my hands as a professional, of accepting their final stormwater management, or perhaps DEP, another agency, wants to see something specific, or the county wants to see something specific on the site, it doesn't change our approval.
Well, that, that goes to the fact of what happens afterwards, because a lot of times these people come before us, and their plans will be one way. We will make changes on our end, then our engineer and planner will make other changes. And once they're finalized, they go before Deborah, and she signs them, I sign them, the engineer signs them, and that could take a month or two after their approval, because there are things that have to be done.
There also are things that are construction code, and that often, I think, sometimes the board gets mired in that, and they'll say, oh, we don't think it's safe.
Yeah, we don't need to.
And it's sort of like, well, that's not really your decision.
Right, right.
You know, somebody else will decide that for you.
Yeah. I mean, that's why, that's why I think it's important for us to focus on the things that are our concern, to see the variances, the things that are our purview. Because if we get too focused on the other things, we actually probably won't be as diligent, diligent at asking questions about the things we are supposed to be focused on.
Every approval is conditional. It's a matter of how many and exactly what the conditions are, but every approval is conditional. On the one hand, you're not just going to say, oh, I think they met the variance relief, and whatever happens, happens. There's a fair amount of comprehensiveness that goes into the process before and during the approval process, and once there is, presumably, you know, if it's an approval by this board, you know, the turkey's defrosted and it's most of the way cooked. But it might not be ready for service at the table yet, there's a little more to go with the professionals and the outside agencies, before ultimately there's, all conditions are satisfied in the post-approval compliance stage of the cooking of the turkey. I don't know, I started with that analogy. And I should have used a different than turkey, but...
That's okay.
The, and then ultimately, you know, what is constructed. So...
Have you, Steve, or any of our experts, ever been involved in a case where a board has approved the zoning end of it, but for some reason, they could not go beyond, they could not build it because of, they couldn't, they were precluded by some technical issue?
DEP.
Yeah, DEP, or they couldn't satisfy something?
Or DOT.
And that has happened?
Yeah.
And you could potentially get a...
We don't have a lot of, we haven't seen a lot of that on our end, but it does happen.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be, for example, on Valley Road with the county.
Right.
Number of driveways within distance to an intersection, other things that, it's, if we know that those requirements are there, we as professionals would strongly encourage them to go to the county and get guidance first, get the review first.
Make their plans according.
We know what might be a part of it, but it's not, it's not our place to hold up their application in our jurisdiction to wait for that. We need to vote on the application in front of us. We need to review it technically and give you guidance on the application in front of us.
Usually, the municipal approval is one of, if not the, first approvals, because if they're not going to get zoning board approval, then there's not much to talk to DEP or DOT or the county or anyone else about.
Well, they can get some preliminary information.
But, well, exactly. So that's why we don't necessarily have the right to say, get everybody else's approval first, from county on up to the federal government, and then come back and see us, and we'll tell you what we think. But we do want to have a fair idea of what the others are going to do and require through the process. That's why it should start, most of these outside approvals, perhaps the process, particularly with DEP or DOT, should start, and there should be information provided prior to our approval, before we go ahead and prove it. It's feasibility, as long as it's a feasible project and permitable project, which Joe was alluded to, I think, before, you know, if there's a path to getting the permits and getting the other approvals, well, then, you know, we can't say, eh, we're not going to see you until you get everybody else's okay first.
But one, one strong example of that would be, somebody comes to, say, our planning board on an application for development, they have first-floor elevations of the building that are well below the flood plain or at the flood plain, and we know that they won't be able to obtain permits, they won't be able to build, and that would trigger D variances that would come to this board, there's no reason for them to be able to proceed through the completeness review and the technical nature of the application to be heard at the board. Because they may, they may get a decision at the wrong jurisdiction, because that elevation is what's driving the C or D variance.
And things are going to change, they're going to have to come back to the zoning board and start all over again. And that's why also, particularly with site plan applications, see amended approvals. So, and every decision we make is correct, but not everybody always agrees with it. Sometimes applicants are disgruntled.
The number of them.
Yeah. You knew? Look at it, who could believe? But the, sometimes applicants whose application are denied, is denied, are disgruntled by that. And sometimes objectors, neighboring objectors, when an application is granted, might be disgruntled by that, and they may be so disgruntled, they appeal your decisions. You are an administrative body, your decisions are appealed, if they're appealed, and they shouldn't be, and that would be wrong, but if, and when they're repealed, it's a prerogative writ appeal, they call it, it goes to the trial court, Superior Court in Morris County, I have to remember where I am. We are the boot to Morris County, right? Like Sicily. It goes to a trial judge. Now, these trial judges generally don't hear appeals. They're the judges whose decisions are appealed to the appellate division, and ultimately potentially the Supreme Court of State of New Jersey. But...
In this case, they do.
But in this case, they are, they hear the administrative decisions, the quasi-judicial. Our board decisions...
It's usually one judge that's assigned that.
Oftentimes, it's one, although it doesn't have to be, but they thankfully usually find one or two that they'll direct most of the prerogative writs to.
To have some experience in this.
And they would hear, and the appeal would be based on the record below, the four corners, the record below, everything that...
There's no new information.
For the most part. Now, cases can be settled, and that's okay, but if they're settled, the settlement can't just be the board says, all right, well, you take a little off the top and we'll give it to you after an appeal. Okay? I mean, that could happen, but there has to be a public hearing. The case was Whispering Woods. I have a personal problem with that, because the case that really invented this process was Warner versus Sutton. So you know why I have a problem. Instead of a Warner hearing, it's a Whispering Woods hearing, but I'll get over it one day. But...
But Whispering, it's just so...
Whispering, yeah, Whispering, Warner, those are two words that were never put together. But, but, right? But, but, but a Whispering Woods settlement, we would actually have a Whispering Woods hearing. In other words, there would be a settlement agreement, but it would be conditioned on, because this is what the court said, this is public interest litigation that we, once it's appealed, this is, matters of public interest. So while the board and the applicant can agree that if they take a little, you know, they make it a little smaller, or make these adjustments, we'll settle the litigation, because maybe we would have approved it, had they asked for a vote on that modified, less detrimental to the public application. Maybe we would have said yes. That's okay, it's okay to settle, but it has to be on notice to the public.
Similar to a regular...
And it would a public hearing, opportunity for the public to ask questions, opportunity for the public to comment. It is a hearing, so it is a Whispering Woods, they call it, that was the case that came after Warner versus Sutton, Whispering Woods case, it's a Whispering Woods hearing, and we have had those. And that's basically the process.
Can I just, let me just interject one thing, because I know something that your predecessor, Yolanta, used to harp on, which I think was good, which is...
Anything Yolanta harps on is good.
Is good, which is that the board in deliberating, either for or against, should be very clear what their thoughts are on the record, and as close as you can to tie them to the proofs. Steve went over tonight, and I, they're always outlined in my letter, whether anyone reads them or not, I don't know. But they're, and to keep to those kinds of things, because the judge is going to look at why...
Right, how we based our rejection or approval.
And you see it sometimes with cases where they're like, "The board just voted no, we have no idea why."
Yeah, if you read some of the cases out there, and I have, the judges look very disfavorable upon boards that don't have enough meat to their decision.
Yeah.
They wanna see some meat on that rib, they don't wanna see just bone.
They don't understand the bounds.
Yeah, they wanna see what made your decision.
But as your board attorney, I'm gonna ask for five minutes to delve into that a little quicker.
Yeah, no, no, I understand what he's gonna say, but the meat means that you, that you don't overstate the reason, but you at least say that you believe that the proofs provided satisfied things. But, at the same time, and, and this is why, when we have an applicant, I go to our experts first. I have our experts always asked first, because I know that their questions will alleviate our questions, because they have, if they have questions, we have questions, and sometimes they have questions that we haven't thought about. So, I will go to them first, I will let them ask their expert, I will let them ask questions of their witnesses, and then, at that point, we have a better idea of what they're concerned with, after reading their report and having them ask questions. Because a lot of times what the applicant testifies to, sometimes brings up new questions that we have not thought of, or new issues that, we had one guy that didn't know what he wanted to do with his property, and we had to actually tell him. So, it was like, "Okay, you know, what do you really wanna do?" You'll have all kinds of people coming before us, you'll have people that are prepared up to the hill, you have people that, coming in here like, "I don't know," but, you know, like, "What do you wanna do with that? I don't know, I didn't really give it much thought, well, now's the time to do it." But, so...
If that happens, then I'm not doing my job.
No, I know, but no, they could, they could, they could really, they could be wacky and change their mind.
They're, they're, yeah, but not everybody's representative, no verse in the process.
Right.
They have, they should read the handy dandy thing.
And they have it, right.
But, but a couple of things on deliberations, and one suggestion, and it's not because I write them, it's because Chris writes them, he drafts our wonderful resolutions, the best. The, read the resolutions, because what we try to do, and what Chris achieves, is explain in the resolutions, the findings of fact, of what was presented to the board, it's a synopsis, and a detailed decision section, applying all those criteria that I was just talking about before, and how the, factually, the applicant has demonstrated the positive and negative criteria for all the different types of variance relief, and any site plan exceptions, any site plan approvals or subdivision approvals, and then a list of all the conditions of approval, and then the vote, it's all there. If you read those resolutions, all this stuff will start to be in your head like, like they are in mine, and my condolences, but when you get there, but, but it will help you in hearing and thinking and asking questions and deciding the cases. On deliberations, I wasn't kidding before when I said, "Say the right thing, but don't say the wrong thing." I'm gonna tell you a little bit about deliberations. The, and I'll give you a couple of examples. One example is this, and they're both from the same board, many, many, many decades ago. The, I had one board member who always used to say one of two things at the end of the case, on deliberations. He would either say, "In my opinion, the applicant met both the positive and negative criteria for the relief sought," or he said, "In my opinion, the applicant did not meet both the positive and negative criteria for the relief sought." He was always right, he always said the right thing, he never said the wrong thing, he didn't say a heck of a lot, though, really, right? It was pretty conclusory, what he said, it didn't really add to the deliberations, because when you deliberate, you're gonna hear different views, different things, things you might not have thought about, you might even change what your vote was gonna be. And that's the beauty of, that's why there's seven of you and not one of you. So, it is important to deliberate meaningfully. On the other hand, don't say the wrong thing. For example, I had, in that same board, many, here's a guy had a case where, and it happened to be the deciding vote, which by the way, it doesn't matter if it's the deciding vote or not, if you say the wrong thing, we're gonna have problems on an appeal. But it was the deciding vote, and the board member said the following, "Well, I think the applicant proved their case, but there's 50 people out there who are against it, and somebody's gotta stand with the public, so that someone's gonna be me, I vote no." And after I, you know, stood up from the seat that I had just fallen from, I figured out how I was gonna write this resolution, and there's a case, Scully v. Bozarth, right? I'm sorry, Scully hyphen Bozarth.
Scully v. Bozarth, oh.
It's the VFW case, involved a, the sighting of a tank in front of a VFW, that's not what's interesting about the case, although somewhat interesting, but, but one of the things about the case was, it basically said, I'm paraphrasing, what the board meant when the board voted the way it voted, was what it says in the resolution. So what happens is, after the decision, Chris and I will put together a resolution memorializing your decision, if it's an approval with all the conditions, decision section, the analysis, everything I talked about. Those members who voted yes, if it was an approval, or no, if it was a denial, will then review it and will vote on its adoption. Once you adopt that resolution, the law is, and Scully Bozarth says this, "That's what you meant when you said what you said and you did what you did." That said, and the transitory remarks of an individual board member don't necessarily constitute, is what the other case says, the New York S M S A case that talks about Scully Bozarth, says the transitory remarks of what a board member may have said during the course of the proceeding, even in deliberations, isn't necessarily what the board, you know, voted on or relied on, whatever. That said, when I got to the appeal on that particular case that I told you about, and I argued Scully Bozarth, and the resolution, and blah, 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 and they had a poster board, the disgruntled applicant who was denied, a poster board of the quote of my board member, what she said, yeah, and, and we finished the argument, and the judge called us into chambers and said, "Mr. Warner, you wanna settle this case?" And, and Mr. Warner found a way in which we arrived at what ultimately then became a Whispering Woods hearing, before that set, very same board, without that particular board member being a member of that particular zoning board anymore. So you wanna say the right thing, you don't wanna say the wrong thing.
Well, stick to the proofs.
Stick to the proofs.
Stick to the proofs.
And when you read these resolutions, you'll know what the right things are to say, and tax dollars, and making more profit, those aren't the right things to say.
It's in the, it's in our review letter.
It's in the review letters, it's in the, it's in the resolutions, so don't feel chilled that you can't say anything, you know, but there's a few things out there that you've already probably figured out.
But like you said...
Are the things not to say.
If you come up with saying, "I think they met all the proofs," but, then you got a issue, because that, that, usually the but is not a good thing.
Yeah. That's a classic example of what not to say.
And it actually happened.
Yeah. So it's a task case.
Yeah. Any questions?
Does that, particularly...
There weren't any objecting residents when they came back again, after the view?
Oh, yeah, but it was a Whispering Woods settlement, and, and for the most part, I mean, you know, the comments were made, there can even be some modifications even at the hearing on a Whispering Woods settlement, if the applicant's willing to do it, but at that point, you already have a settlement agreement, it's rare, if ever, that somebody's gonna, the board's gonna quote-unquote "renag" on the settlement.
Right.
I did have it happen once.
You, you...
A Whispering Woods hearing.
What's that?
And a Whispering Woods hearing is open, there is a long introduction that explains...
While you're there.
Why they're back again.
Why they're back and what the purpose of being there is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it kinda limits the public in there.
And often, the attorney will go into executive session before Whispering Woods and tell the board, "Don't screw up."
Well...
Don't make that happen again.
In so many words, yeah.
No, no, that's okay, and there's nothing wrong with that process, because again, as I said, usually what happens is, the applicant is making modifications even after the appeal, and it's not just about settling the case, which there's nothing wrong with it, there's public policy in the courthouse, not surprisingly, it's a settle case, it's a good thing. Litigation, you know, is...
It's expensive, unpredictable.
Yeah, and likely, yeah, the outcomes are unpredictable, but, but also, generally what happens is a modification of the application, what they're asking for, that again, may have been something that you'd've said yes to in the first place, so saying yes to it now, there's nothing wrong with that. But, again, you know, how often can you make everybody happy? And there may well be neighbors, for example, on a Whispering Woods, that would still prefer the answer be no, no matter what. So, it's not a popularity contest, there will be times when, one good thing, when you're in the supermarket, not gonna mention any name, on a weekend and somebody wants to talk to you about a case, just say, "The board attorney told me I can't talk," and keep serpentining through those aisles, get your bread and milk and everything else.
That's, that's one thing I wanted to say. It's important that you go look at the site, because, I mean, even if you've passed it a million times on the road, you haven't gone in the backyard, you really haven't seen it, if you do go to the site, let the owner know you're there, don't carry a conversation.
Trust pass.
You know, you shouldn't get outside information, and I read in this beautiful handbook outline here that you can say, you know, you state, "I visited the site, I saw this, I saw that," you know, explain what you saw. Things look different in person than even a photograph sometimes. Sometimes photographs are taken at angles that really are not a true angle, you don't see what the neighbor sees. That happens, but, you know, it's just, you know, just one of those things where, ask the questions, don't sit here and have a question you don't ask. There's no questions that are, that are out of, you know, within reason, there's no questions that are dumb.
And, and share, to the chairman's point, share your knowledge...
Right.
In the context of the hearing.
Right.
Generally through questioning.
Right. Like, say, "I happened to notice this on your property."
Is it true, or was it, was this, is it, why? Because, again, due process, it gives an opportunity for everybody, the applicant and their witnesses and the members of the public, to hear it, think about it, and address what your knowledge was, because if you kept a piece of knowledge in your head, and it impacted your vote, yes or no, and you never shared it, you know, in the public hearing, it's not fair to the applicant. I had a situation once where somebody said, "You know, I was visiting the site, and I saw this, this, and this, and there was a mess, and there was all these trucks, and it was overparked and everything," and, and the applicant said, "Was that on, you know, last Thursday, you know?" "Yeah, it was, that's when we had the fire." You know, this was an aberration. Had that board member not said anything, and just said, "I'm voting no, because I saw this place and they keep it a mess and it's over, or underparked, whatever, there's too many cars and trucks and this and that," they would never have known. So share the information, it gives everybody an opportunity through the due process or government, you know, our judicial process, to address things. Also, real quick ethics, if you have a direct or indirect personal or financial interest or involvement in the outcome of the case, if you live within 200 feet...
Well, I'm shopping with them.
If it's an immediate family member, if it's an employer, et cetera, et cetera.
A person you've had dealings with, like, if I represented someone for an illegal, and they were coming out after we accused them.
You may want to, ask me, in private, if you're not sure whether, what you have to do, hey, you know, my gut tells me, go what you got, contact me, and I'll let you know whether you have to recuse yourself, and regardless, even if you don't have to, and believe you could be impartial, you know, prudence may dictate, depending upon the circumstances, because there's something called the Local Government Ethics Law, 22.5, in particular, sub E, that based just about, under the case law, has come to the conclusion of saying, if you have an appearance of impropriety or impartiality, that's enough, and it gets a little tight. Now, everybody knows everybody, you wouldn't be on the zoning board if you were the least popular person in town and nobody knew you, and vice versa, right? You know, and everybody knows everybody, especially in a small community. So it's not, you know, geez, I, you know, I know Charlie, or I saw him in the, you know, supermarket once, that's okay.
If everybody had, everybody shops a shop, everybody, so if it's a common, if it's a common thing, fine. I mean, you don't have any extraordinary thing.
Something that's out of the ordinary with the general public, let me know.
Deborah, go ahead.
I just wanna add to communications. The good thing is that this team here, Steve, Chris, Liz, Joe, myself, we're here to answer all your questions, we're here to help you 24/7, you know it.
Maybe not 24/7. Pretty close.
That's not true, between 3:00 AM and 5:00 AM, I sleep.
I was gonna say.
I watch a lot of West Coast hockey.
But, but on the flip side, there's a couple things, as far as etiquette, to remember when you're asking, now, always, when in doubt, just email me, and then I will forward the question, regardless of whether it's regarding an application, or whether you need to recuse, when in doubt, just email me, and then I will get in touch with the appropriate party. I don't mind if you go directly to the professionals, but if you don't include me in the conversation or copy me, the professionals will come back and say, "Uh, is it okay to answer?" Because I'm the keeper of the budget.
Right.
So it's best to try to keep me included. Now, also, when the four of us, or five of us, or whomever, we send out group emails, don't reply all, and when you have a question, please don't put it in writing to all, remember that, because those are things that, those go on record.
Those are discoverable.
Correct, they're discoverable as a quorum, so anytime you have questions, just when in doubt, just shoot me an email, call me, we'll get it solved, we'll get you an answer, again, whether it's about an application that's pending that you're reviewing, or something procedurally about the board, we're here to help anyway we can.
Replying to all, saying like, "I'll be at the meeting," is not a bad thing to reply to all.
It's not a bad thing.
That's different.
You're not gonna get smacked.
Yeah, replying to all, "I'll be at the meeting," is actually a good thing, because it lets everybody know, "Okay, one person will be there, I'll be there."
Well, no, it's not, because then some board member will go, "Oh, well, your associate's gonna be there, I don't have to go."
Let's hope that they don't do that, that's not what we want. But, is there anything you guys wanna add, as experts? You know, I mean, we have, guys, as long as I've been on this board, we've always had very good experts, we try, and I think we have excellent experts at this time, and we should rely upon them, we should read their reports, and, and their reports are very extensive, and they lead us in the right direction, they lead us to what questions we should be asking. And if the applicant has done their job, they should've had the answers to our reports already. Like, a lot of times, their reports will say, "Well, there's a question here, there's a question there." A good applicant will have already answered those questions, and they'll address that in their, in their, their public presentation. So, that's always a good place that they, if they've answered their questions, they probably answer ours, most of them.
One thing about our, our reports, there's, there's an inherent mixed audience. So, you know, we write our reports, there, there's a balance of material that's written to you as the audience, for your purposes of land use decision, and then there's a balance of the report that's written in a highly technical nature to the applicant and their professionals.
Right.
So, don't shy away from, when you read the report, identifying things that you wanna ask questions, and asking us before we get to the hearings. You know, and have those conversations that Deborah was talking about, the appropriate way of engaging with us, because every time I write a letter, it's gonna be rare that every single item in there, you're fully good on, especially when we get into major developments, and stormwater technical rules, and changes in regulation, and other different things. So, a lot of that content is meant for them and their professionals, you don't have to understand all of it.
Right, to guide them, yeah.
But, a quick discussion for five minutes can allow you to understand what balance of that is for you, and what balance of that is for them.
And if I may, one thing we didn't cover tonight, and we talked a lot about variances, process, procedure, hopefully some practical things mixed in there as well, mostly coming from others than me, but, site plans and subdivisions, and in particular, site plans, we do get those when we have D variances associated with those site plans, and they can be very complex, a lot of engineering, civil engineering, stormwater management, a lot of architecture, we're not even, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, I do play a planner on TV sometimes, but, the, so, having a basic understanding of how to read engineering plans and architectural, the architecture, at least to me, is a little easier, the engineering stuff, boy, but, the, is helpful. So you are gonna get those, and rely primarily on Joe for help there, and I don't know, maybe one day, there'll be a mini-course that Joe will do on how to read a site plan, but we'll see about that.
I mean, I, I...
And now Joe's really gonna be angry at me.
No, I think that's an excellent idea, because it would hone that, this was more of a general operating thing, but...
And planning boards do, review site plans and engineering plans and architectural plans more than zoning boards, but not much more, because as I said, as long as there's a D in the mix, they're coming to you, not the planning board. So we'll get our sh... Um, because as I said, as long as there's a D in the mix, they're coming to you, not the planning board, so we'll get our share.
Any last minute questions?
I just wanted to piggy, I'm sorry, I wanted to piggyback off what Steve was going to say, because I was going to bring up that, in addition to C and D variances, there's other things you're going to have to vote on, site plans and subdivisions, as Steve mentioned, but. Within that category, there's also, um, what are called design waivers, so they're sort of like variances, but light version of variances, in the sense that. Your site plan requirements, that's what you're, that's what you have to assess, is whether or not they're demonstrating compliance with your site plan or subdivision requirements, so that they want to, what's called a waiver from that, hence a design waiver. They have to prove to you that either, um, that requirement is going to be, uh, impracticable, or is going to exact an undue hardship. Very similar to like a C one hardship variance, but they, they're not required to prove the negative criteria like they otherwise would be for a C variance. Um, additionally.
Exceptions are C one light.
Right, C one light, exactly. Um, additionally, a few other things that don't come up too often, but I figured I'd just throw them out there, so you're not totally surprised by them if and when they come up. Um, planning variances, which still kind of evade my understanding, because I've very sparingly dealt with them, um, and I'm sure if in one of those comes up, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But additionally, there's, uh, also what are called exceptions from the RSIS requirements, that's the residential site improvement standards, and New Jersey Administrative Code sets up. Standards for how residential developments are supposed to be created, right? So every once in a while, you'll have an applicant who wants to deviate from that, typically what you'll see is maybe, they don't, they're not supplying as many parking spaces as they otherwise would be required to, so they would, they would need. Well, potentially a C variance for not providing enough parking spaces, but also an RSIS exemption, and again, we'll cross those bridges when we come to them, but again, just wanted to throw it out there, so you're not surprised by it when, if and when they come up, so.
Too many houses on a dead end street.
Right, exactly, something like that.
Yep, so now you have a better idea of what you signed up for when you said yes to the request to volunteer to the zoning board or filled out the form or what have you. Um, but, uh, it's going to get even better and better, um, so you have a lot of resources to look at, to, to look at. You'll hear, uh, you'll take that course hopefully in the next few months, uh, to be formally certified, you've only now been informally certified.
And you're not, and everything you hear in that course is going to be the exact things we did tonight, they're going to go into it in depth, because they have to spend all day doing it, but. You're not going to, you're not going to learn any better than.
About four hours, about four hours, for, well, thank you, about, about four hours, after doing it for so many, so many years, maybe.
My last little day.
We, we were able to condense it to two, um, with help, so, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Anything else left?
There's nothing else left, right? We have no whole business in New.
If there's bills to pay, let's make sure, no? Okay.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion, so moved.
All right, all in favor, aye, adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, good stuff, thank you all.
Mandatory three-year term.